Muy buenas noches. Queremos saber, ya vamos a dar inicio. El alcalde está aquí, todos los participantes. Queremos saber si hay alguna persona que necesita traducción y solamente habla español. ¿Alguien solamente habla español? Creo que está aquí.
Bien, buenas noches a todos. Y quiero agradecer a todos ustedes por venir y escuchar esta noche. Y quiero agradecer en particular, y tal vez si pudiera preguntarle al público, un aplauso para todos nuestros candidatos que nos han acompañado esta noche. Estoy emocionado de decir que, al menos en reciente memoria, este es el número más alto de candidatos que hemos tenido para asientos en la Junta de la Escuela, lo cual creo que es un signo muy positivo sobre cuánto esta comunidad le importa a nuestros estudiantes y el progreso que se está llevando a cabo en el Distrito Público de la Provenza. Así que gracias a todos por su interés y gracias a todos por apoyarlos a través de este proceso. Voy a decir solo unas palabras y hacer un par de anuncios. Introducir a mi amigo y colega Rachel Miller y luego vamos a empezar. La evento de esta noche será moderada por la Liga de las Vozes Mujeres, que ha hecho esto durante mucho tiempo y también modera eventos similares en campañas políticas y demás. Y quiero agradecer a la Liga de las Vozes Mujeres por el importante trabajo nonpartidario que hacen para moderar eventos como este y animar la participación cívica adicional. Así que gracias Liga de las Vozes Mujeres. Como les dije antes, creo que Rachel y un par de otras personas pueden apreciar los pequeños pasos de tiempo ahí abajo. Me dan un poco de PTSD porque los he visto levantar en mi cara en el pasado. Y ustedes todos en el escenario esta noche tendrán la oportunidad de experimentar eso también. También quiero sugerir, es absolutamente su elección, pero dado que ha sido un desafío el alojamiento, dado que todos los candidatos, voy a sugerir que los tipos en la fila trasera se levanten cuando hablen para asegurarse de que todo el público pueda verte. Y estoy feliz de decir que tenemos un miembro de la prensa que está aquí esta noche que está transmitiendo en vivo esto para todos los que lo están viendo en casa. Y también estamos grabando. El proceso de programación de la Junta de la Escuela de Providencia es único en el gobierno de Providencia. Hay criterios muy específicos sobre cómo hacerlo, como establecido en nuestra charter de la ciudad. Y hay un comité separado conocido como el Comité de Nombración de la Junta de la Escuela. Y así el Comité de Nombración de la Junta de la Escuela es el que nomina a miembros de la Junta de la Escuela para el alcalde. Y luego tengo la oportunidad de entrevistar a los nominees y hacer programaciones que luego son escuchadas por el Consejo de la Ciudad y aprobadas. Y así quiero agradecer a los miembros del Comité de Nombración de la Junta de la Escuela, Melva Depeña, quien acabamos de escuchar hace un segundo, Melva Benítez y Ken Wong. Y aprecio su servicio. También estamos acompañados, hay muchas personas que obviamente preocupan profundamente por nuestros hijos y ya están sirviendo. Tenemos unos pocos miembros de la Junta de la Escuela con nosotros esta noche. Tyrell Stevens, Tony Aiken y George Latouk, que actualmente están sirviendo. Gracias a todos por su servicio. Nuestro increíble superintendente, Javier Montanez, está aquí en la parte de atrás. Como buen principal, está en la parte de atrás tomando notas de quién prestó atención y quién no. Y nuevamente, solo quiero agradecer a todos por su interés en esta posición increíblemente importante. Una de las cosas que hicimos diferente es que tomamos un proceso de aplicación más largo y hicimos mucho más visión proactiva hacia líderes de la comunidad, grupos de la comunidad y instituciones de la comunidad para tratar de generar el interés que estoy tan gratificado de ver en el escenario aquí esta noche. Hay mucho trabajo que se debe hacer en PPSD, pero también tengo una gran confianza en la liderazgo del superintendente Montanez, el trabajo duro de nuestros principales, maestros, todo el personal de apoyo en nuestras escuelas que preocupan profundamente por los niños que vienen y van de sus edificios escolares todos los días. Y por supuesto, los padres y miembros de la familia que no quieren nada más que oportunidades excepcionales para sus jóvenes, lo cual es la misma aspiración que compartimos con ellos. Así que gracias por su interés esta noche. Espero sentarme y escuchar y ser un miembro del público esta noche. Me gustaría introducir y saludar, solo unas palabras, al presidente del Consejo de la Ciudad, Rachel Miller. Rachel Miller.
Gracias, gracias al alcalde Smiley. Y gracias a todos los administradores que se reunieron esta noche. En verdad, gracias. Es notable ver a todos los que están aquí esta noche, que quieren ser parte de la Junta de la Escuela de Providencia. También gracias al consejero Sanchez por acompañarnos esta noche. Nuestras escuelas, nuestros estudiantes, nuestros maestros, toda nuestra comunidad escolar necesitan personas con visión y compasión y tenacidad ahora mismo, ¿verdad? Más de nunca, todos los días. Y creo que tenemos un grupo increíble de personas reunidos aquí. Espero escuchar a los tipos esta noche. Principalmente, lo que quiero expresar es gracias a todos los que están aquí para ser parte del proceso, a todos los que van a ver esto esta noche o en los días a venir. Y a los que han aplicado. Hay una tremenda oportunidad para nuestras escuelas ahora mismo y para nuestros estudiantes y para nuestros maestros. Y esto realmente muestra mucho corazón y que tenemos un buen camino para seguir adelante. Así que gracias.
Ahora es mi placer introducir a Joan Ratzinas de la Liga de las Vozes Mujeres, que explicará las reglas de esta noche y cómo va la restante noche. Y en este punto, lo vamos a pasar a la Liga. Ellos son los responsables, los candidatos, y mi recomendación es seguir sus buenos consejos.
Gracias al alcalde Smiley. Permítanme introducir a tres otros miembros de la Liga de las Vozes Mujeres que serán importantes en este debate. Los guardes del tiempo, Sarah Gleason y Barbara Ryder, en la parte de frente, tienen placas. Un minuto, treinta segundos, quince segundos y par. Y Mary Frances Cooper, que tiene tarjetas de index y lápices, las pasará. Y si tienen una pregunta incandescente, pueden escribirlo. Y si hay tiempo, no sé, incluiremos una pregunta de ustedes. También estamos acompañados, ustedes se han presentado, Melva Depeña, del Comité de Nombración de la Junta de la Escuela. Quiero agradecer nuevamente, no solo de la ciudad, sino también de la Liga, a los candidatos en el escenario por su entusiasmo de servir a su comunidad. Creo que su entusiasmo vota bien para el futuro de las escuelas. Este año tenemos más candidatos que en el pasado. Además, también hubo un aumento en los empleados del Distrito escolar que se han presentado, pero lamentablemente la charter de la ciudad preocupa su programación. Además, la ciudad ha puesto códigos QR en todo el auditorio y lobby. Así que por favor, en el público, déjense de inmediato y den su feedback sobre el evento y prioridades educativas. Finalmente, gracias al público por venir. Vamos a empezar. Las preguntas serán tres. La primera pregunta es una pregunta de treinta segundos. Empezaremos con David Salvatore. Y permítanme sacar mi lista para ver cómo podemos ir. De alguna manera vamos a ir en sentido contrario. Así que vamos a empezar. La pregunta es treinta segundos. Y observaremos el guardia del tiempo porque hay tantos. Introduzcanse y expliquen por qué querrían ser designados a la Junta de la Escuela de Providencia. Ustedes, treinta segundos. Oh, hay un micrófono.
Puedo aumentar mi voz.
Bueno, gracias. Muchas gracias por hospedar este foro. Gracias a la Liga de las Vozes Mujeres. No es la primera vez que han moderado un debate o foro conmigo. Así que gracias. Mi nombre es David Salvatore. Soy residente de la provincia de Elmhurst en el área de Elmhurst. Mi familia y yo somos residentes de Elmhurst. Fuimos a la escuela primaria Robert F. Kennedy donde mi hijo Bennett está hoy. Él está, ironicamente, en el mismo salón de kindergarten que yo estaba en más de cuarenta años atrás. Y ese salón de clase no ha cambiado mucho en décadas. Así que cuando la gente me pregunta por qué quiero ser miembro de la Junta de la Escuela, no solo para mi hijo que asiste a la escuela primaria Robert F. Kennedy, sino familias de todo el distrito. Creo que merecen mucho mejor que lo que reciben. Y cuando miro nuestros edificios escolares, necesitamos atención, necesitamos trabajo. Y espero escuchar a muchos de los otros participantes esta noche y en formas en las que podemos aprobar nuestros edificios públicos de Providencia. Gracias.
Por favor, no aplaudan. Estaremos aquí hasta el final.
Nuestro amigo, Meloria. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Candela Adalizet. Tengo tres hijos que fueron a la escuela primaria y a la escuela pública. He estado viviendo aquí en Rhode Island durante treinta años, en la sección Elwood. He sido parte del PTO, PTA, escuela de aprendizaje desde Chaparron hasta ser juez para la investigación juvenil, una clase clásica de la comisión DEI. Tengo un pasión por la educación. Cuando obtuve mi doctorado, el director de los programas dijo: "Focal"
Gracias. Mi nombre es Meloria.
Yo soy Monta Dondu. Buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es Nancy. Está bien. Soy producto de la Escuela Pública de Providencia. Soy hija de los sobrevivientes de la guerra mongémaca. Y entiendo cómo se siente ser estudiante en la Escuela Pública de Providencia. Y me involucro con los padres, las familias, los estudiantes de color que están pasando los diferentes desafíos en Providencia. Así que sé lo que es y quiero incluirlos en el proceso de hacer este cambio. Así que es por eso que estoy aquí hoy. Y no importa lo que suceda, estoy aquí para hacer este cambio.
¿Reinstaurarlo? Sí. Sí.
Está bien. No, mi nombre es Shekhan Boral. Actualmente tengo cinco hijos que pasaron por la Escuela de Providencia. También trabajo para la Navegación de la Unión de Créditos donde hacemos mucho trabajo de la comunidad, especialmente con las minorías en Central Falls. La razón por la que siento que soy un buen candidato para esta posición es porque trabajo muy fuertemente con la comunidad minoritaria, especialmente dentro de las escuelas y dentro de, ya sabes, simplemente enseñando la literatura financiera y simplemente enseñando a nuestros estudiantes lo que significa ser financieramente seguros. Porque ella es un voluntariante.
Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Michael Nina. Fui a la escuela en Providencia. Mi familia es una familia de nómadas, no hablantes de inglés. Fui a Mary Fargerty, Roger Williams, Escuela Secundaria Central. Y fui parte del programa ESL. Fui a clases regulares, me gradué con honores, fui a Johnson y Wales. Y soy defensor de la comunidad desde hace años, trabajador de salud mental de la comunidad. Y soy testigo del potencial que el sistema escolar público puede tener en alguien que viene aquí a los Estados Unidos de nuevo.
Hola. Hola, Ellen Birley. Hola. Hola, soy Ellen Birley. Creo que las escuelas son el sangre de la comunidad y de la democracia. Mis razones por querer ser miembro de la Junta de la Escuela son both profesional and personal. Profesionalmente, he dedicado mi vida a la igualdad educativa. He sido maestra, entrenadora de instrucciones, escritora de currículum en Baltimore, Cambridge, Boston, escuelas públicas. Soy consultora y consejera para muchos de los grandes distritos escolares de la nación. Y he visto y trabajado junto a ellos, luchando por la equidad educativa y mejorar los resultados de los estudiantes. Profesionalmente, soy madre de tres niños de la Escuela Pública de Providencia, una activa miembro del PTO. Y estaré emocionada de trabajar junto a la actual Junta de la Escuela mientras asuma sus nuevos desafíos.
Gracias.
Hola. Hola a todos. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Ronald Bickham. Nací y nació en Providencia. Mis primeros diez años en el lado sur, justo a la calle Broad Street. Luego mi familia se mudó a Elmhurst, donde en esencia he estado viviendo desde entonces. He asistido a la Escuela de la candidatura de Providence, a Daniel Green y a la escuela de bachillerato. Mi interés en la Junta es que tengo dos hijos de edad escolar ahora y eso realmente despertó mi interés en la educación del estado. Realizando que el distrito estaba en problemas, me uní a la Junta de la Escuela local de mis hijos, Times Two Academy. Y espero impartir las lecciones que he aprendido allí para ayudar al distrito en general.
Sí, hola. Mi nombre es David Tremblay. Soy residente de la provincia de 20 años y he tenido hijos en la Escuela Pública de Providencia desde 2009. Fui activo en las organizaciones de padres, incluyendo presidente del PTO justo antes de COVID en Nathan Bishop. Trabajo para la General Asamblea de Rhode Island, oficina fiscal, como viceadmirador fiscal. Soy muy familiarizado con las medidas de financiación estatal para la educación. Y estoy muy interesado en...
Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Melissa Hughes. Soy madre de dos estudiantes en las escuelas públicas de Providencia. Y desde que comenzaron hace más de diez años, he estado involucrada en el nivel escolar, salón de clase y distrito. He pasado los últimos cinco años sirviendo en la equipo de liderazgo del Consejo de la Asistencia Parental. He pasado los últimos tres años sirviendo en el Comité de Edificación escolar que está haciendo un trabajo increíble ahora mismo con la construcción escolar y la mejora. Y también he sido un orgullo de miembro de la Ora de liderazgo educativo para la equidad educativa durante los últimos cuatro años como líder de padres. Gracias.
Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Caitlin Krill. Soy madre de cuatro hijos de la mitad de la provincia, tres del distrito y dos de los cuales tienen necesidades especiales en la IEP en el Distrito Público de la Provenza. He vivido en Providence desde la calle Broad Street por casi diez años. Actualmente, soy maestra de cuidado diario y trabajo en mi grado como maestra en especialización. Mis objetivos para ser parte de la Junta de la Escuela Pública de Providencia son simples. Quiero ayudar a un distrito, ser activa para los padres y ser voz para la educación especializada de los niños del distrito.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Thasilis Blue. Soy latina que vino a este país sin inglés. Fui a la Escuela Secundaria Central y tuve clases ESL en el sótano. Y sé que tenemos muchos problemas con personas de otros países que vienen a nosotros y la forma en que les enseñamos. Y quiero ser parte del plan para ayudar a ese grupo. Tengo tres hijos que pasaron por el departamento escolar aquí. Uno graduó de la URI. Mi hijo hace plumbing y energía y mi pequeño es EQ. Y no puedo esperar a ayudar a crear y traer más padres a la escuela.
Gracias.
Hola a todos. Primero quiero agradecer...
Creo que tienen que estar en el fondo.
Solo quiero agradecerles que vienen tarde. Cojo un equipo de baloncesto, así que estaba bajando las chicas. Pero mi nombre es Mish. Soy estudiante de la academia Sofia. También cojo en el equipo de la selección de la selección de la cancha para ocho años. Mi hijo está en la Escuela Pública de Providencia. Ha estado en Alfa Lima, en Daniel Green y ahora está en la escuela Hope. Soy muy pasionada por las prácticas restaurativas y la enseñanza culturalmente competente.
Gracias.
Hola. Hola, buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Jenny Mercado. Estoy applying para ser parte del comité porque soy uno de esos miembros de la comunidad latinas que pasaron a la escuela pública. Gradué de la escuela de Ma Place. Y sé los desafíos que cada niño que viene de otro estado, que viene del país, sin saber el idioma. Así que quiero ser parte de crear un ambiente donde los niños se sientan cómodos en su propio idioma. Así que es por eso que estoy aplicando para ser parte del comité.
Mi nombre es Everett Hope. Nací en Kentucky, pero ahora residía en Providence. Solo quiero, como sé que el tiempo va a irse, pero esto es realmente genial y increíble. Darle un aplauso a todos aquí. Es increíble que todos estemos aquí. Hay mucho que se ha dicho antes, pero creo que la oportunidad que hay aquí es que tenemos la oportunidad de galvanizar la comunidad y hacer la excepción a la regla. Y que la educación es la mejor civilización. Lo siento, me olvidé.
Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Christopher Smiratundo. Algunos tipos me conocen de Dare, Dirac Action for Rights and Equality, donde pasé más de una década como organizador, eventualmente director. Pero estoy aquí porque tengo dos niños palestinos orgullosos que están ahí. Van a Spaziano ahora, pero Mina solía ir a Loro antes de que se cerrara. Y siempre he liderado desde esos ejemplos, ¿verdad? Así que la única razón por la que estoy aquí es por ellos y los otros tipos como ellos, los niños, el personal, los maestros. Y soy organizador y siempre lo seré. Así que este es un punto de lucha. Este es donde estoy dispuesto a intervenir y estoy feliz de que todos me escuchen.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Cedric Russell. Soy producto de las escuelas públicas de Providencia. He sido a Martin Luther King. Fui a E.W. Flynn. He estado en Central. He estado en Hope. He estado en Nathan Bishop. He estado en UConn. Y en realidad sé lo que necesita para dirigir una escuela y darle a los niños la seguridad que necesitan, la educación que necesitan y, lo más importante, el amor que necesitan. Gracias.
Hola. Mi nombre es Chris Barrett. Soy residente de la provincia de 15 años. Y soy pediatra y médico de emergencia. Así que veo lo mejor y lo peor de los niños todos los días. Y los niños y las familias realmente necesitan nuestro apoyo. Y con ese背景, soy defensor de los niños. Eso es mi trabajo y quiero continuar haciéndolo en un lugar donde creo que hace la mayor diferencia, que es en las escuelas. Así que espero hablar más.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Tahan Ross. Actualmente, soy el director ejecutivo de las escuelas públicas de la comunidad de las escuelas públicas de Boston. Soy propietario de casa en Providencia y un ex administrador en las escuelas públicas de la provincia. Estoy muy orgulloso de decir que escribí la solicitud de admisión de la Academia de Salud CT para la escuela de bachillerato de Alvarez. Y he dedicado mi vida a apoyar el desarrollo de los jóvenes. He estado en educación durante veinte años.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Chanel Fano. Soy madre de cuatro hijos y soy médica. Tengo dos años de trabajo social y mi motivación es mis hijos viendo el antes y el después durante los últimos veinte años desde que fui a la escuela pública. Y los veo cambiar el antes y el después. Así que quiero ser parte del cambio de la Junta de la Escuela si tengo la oportunidad.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Joe Norris y vivo en Providence, en el norte. Asistí a la CCI donde gradué con mi asociado. Fui a la Universidad Royal, obtuve mi bachelor y luego fui a Johnson y Will. Y obtuve mi máster. Tengo dos hijos, y trabajo con Yale, Sistema de Salud de la Huelva. En la Escuela de Medicina de Yale. Por el amor de la Providencia, me dijeron que debía mudarme allí, pero vivo aquí en el draft todos los días para ir a Connecticut y volver aquí a vivir en Providence. Quiero decir que lo amo. Muchas gracias.
Hola, soy Andrew Poya. Soy un científico del medio ambiente. He subido a la provincia de nueve años. Tengo tres jóvenes. Fui en el equipo de diseño de la comunidad, que ayudó a redactar el plan de transformación. Fui a cada reunión para eso. He estado involucrado en muchos temas de educación, testificando en la Casa de Estado, así como voluntariado con los niños para animar programas STEM, así como programas de lectura. Y realmente quiero asegurarme de que nuestras escuelas públicas son realmente buenas para todos. Gracias.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Manon Man Su. Quiero agradecer a todos por invitarme aquí hoy. Soy residente de la ciudad de la provincia de la vida, producto de la Escuela de la Provincia. Un hijo, un nieto, hermano y parecido a un tío. Así que cuando la gente me pregunta, es para las voces que no pueden hablar. Y espero que sea alguien que hará esto por el amor de la ciudad también. Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Margarita Pryor. Estoy sorprendida y emocionada de que hay tantos de nosotros que realmente preocupan por el sistema escolar aquí esta noche. No tengo niños en el sistema porque los míos están todos adultos, pero mis cuatro hijos fueron a la escuela en las escuelas públicas de Washington DC. Así que sé los sistemas y los problemas que pueden ocurrir cuando eres underfunded y underappreciado. Así que tengo tres objetivos. Uno es hacer que la escuela sea algo que nuestros hijos quieran llegar a y que les ayude a lograrlo. El otro objetivo es que nuestros maestros sean respetados y hagan el trabajo. Y el tercero es hacer que las escuelas sean tan importantes como las demás.
Gracias. Hola a todos. ¿Cómo están? Mi nombre es Angel Newman, o Ashley Newman es mi nombre gubernamental, Angel es mi apodo, así que se acostumbren a eso. Soy de AS220. Soy director ejecutivo allí. He estado allí durante los últimos 15 a 20 años. Mi "por qué" es bastante simple. Mientras la salud y la seguridad de nuestra comunidad son un problema interseccional, sin duda, creo que la educación es el piloto para asegurar que nuestras comunidades no solo sean sanas y seguras, sino que los estudiantes y las familias puedan prosperar y hacer este espacio lleno de posibilidades. Y siento que la Junta de la Escuela es el lugar para hacer ese trabajo. Así que gracias.
Hola a todos. Soy David Talon, residente de la provincia de la vida y graduado de las escuelas de Providencia. He sido educador y activista de la comunidad, presidente de mi asociación de vecindarios, entrenador de 50 años en la Liga de los Niños y muchos otros grupos en los que he trabajado con miles de niños de edad escolar. Estoy actualmente en los equipos de mejora escolar para tres escuelas diferentes. Soy asistente a un representante estatal que visita seis escuelas regularmente. Y el comisionado Infante Green me ha designado al equipo que planifica el takeover estatal de las escuelas de Providencia.
Gracias. Está bien. Segunda pregunta. Buena noticia, van a tener un minuto, lo cual parece ser un tiempo largo. Y para hacer esto un poco más emocionante, vamos a empezar con David Tremblay y ir alrededor. La tercera pregunta, empezaremos con el señor Ross y ir alrededor. Así que será un poco de arrastrarse. La segunda pregunta es: ¿Hay un problema que te motiva a servir en la Junta de la Escuela? Si es así, ¿qué habilidades o experiencias te preparan para abordarlo en este rol? Así que vamos a empezar. Un minuto, señor Tremblay. Y ahora sabemos la rutina, que el reloj ticka. Así que solo cuando uno termina y la siguiente persona resume. Señor Tremblay.
Gracias. 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 ¿Pueden escucharme? Está bien. Hay un problema que está overriding todo, es los estudiantes y los estudiantes de la ciudad de Providence. Hablé antes, tengo dos hijos que aún estaban en el sistema escolar. Fueron a cuatro escuelas diferentes en el distrito. Estoy muy orgulloso de mis dos hijos. Mi esposa y yo los criaron, pero no los criaron solos. Los criaron los maestros, los entrenadores, los administradores, los principales y la comunidad alredente. Y como miembro de la Junta de la Escuela, apoyaría eso a través de comunicación, a través de desarrollo de políticas, currículum, escuchar, esos tipos de cosas que hacen que la Junta de la Escuela sea más responsable y puede hacer una diferencia. Así que si hubiera un problema, sería representar a esos estudiantes y a los demás constituyentes, principalmente los niños. Todos los niños, de todos los aspectos y de todas las partes de la ciudad. Gracias.
Gracias. Nish. No, en sentido contrario.
¿Yo? Sí. Está bien. Creo que el problema que me motiva más es trabajar con otros padres a nivel escolar y a nivel distrito y en toda la ciudad para ver que incluso cuando nuestros líderes a menudo tienen buenas intenciones y ideas y planes, que a veces no es así como las cosas realmente salen o se sienten para los padres a nivel local. He pasado mucho tiempo en las escuelas de padres y maestros de mis hijos y en el Consejo de la Asistencia Parental, escuchando a los padres de todas partes de la ciudad, en todos los niveles de grado, de todos los diferentes antecedentes. Y lo universal es que todos queremos que nuestros hijos sean seguros, queremos que aprendan y queremos que sean respetados y tengan dignidad en la escuela. Esto puede verse diferente para todos, pero creo que mi objetivo es ayudar a elevar la voz y perspectiva de los padres en todos los espacios de toma de decisiones. Gracias.
Gracias, Nish.
Así que para mí, creo que el problema más grande probablemente sería la IEP, la currículum especial cuando traen a los niños. Mi experiencia para eso fue, tengo a los dos niños que son cinco y seis que comienzan la IEP y me dijeron que debido a que eran solo tres y no cumplieron con los requisitos para que estuvieran en su programa, que no podía ayudarme el verano antes de que comenzaran el kindergarten. Para mí, probablemente los hubiera comenzado a tres y habrían fusionado y habría sido una transformación más fácil. Gracias.
Hay tantos desafíos que enfrentamos hoy, pero uno de los problemas que me motiva a ser parte de este grupo es la comunidad. Son los desafíos que vemos todos los días. No quiero que otros padres pasen por lo que pasé tratando de aprender sobre el sistema. Si no hablan el idioma, si vienes a este país y tienes tres trabajos y te llegan tarde y tienes que lidiar con el trabajo de casa y con tus hijos, no conoces el sistema. Así que quiero ser el puente que ayuda a los padres con la Junta y hace que sea más fácil para ellos entender el sistema y cómo funciona.
¿Por favor?
Biggest issue that I would like to focus on is the lack of representation for our Black and Brown youth in schools. It's gotten better, but we can work on it. Along with that, culturally competent classes for teachers who are white and teaching minority students, I think that's super important. And ways that I have experience and skills with this, like I said, well, I didn't say this, I got my masters at Providence College in the Urban Teaching Program. And through that program, I focused on culturally competent teaching. And I think it's super important that our teachers have that education as well, so they can best serve our students in Providence, which are mostly Black and Brown students.
Thank you.
I think one of the biggest issues happening right now in Rhode Island is the language barrier. I come from a family where my mother did not how to use the system, did not how to look up for my grades, did not went to any many things because they didn't provide Spanish interpreter for her. And in the present time, we're still having problems with families that are coming from out of the country and having the same problems. So I want to be able to help those families to feel comfortable speaking in their own language, because a lot of the times, parents do not go to the schools because they don't feel comfortable, because they don't have nobody that speaks Spanish at the, not even at the secretary's desk. Because when a parent sees a Spanish face or a face that makes them comfortable, they will come to you and let you know what's going on. So I think that is one of the biggest issues. And, you know, more parents' engagement, more parents' communication in several languages, not only Spanish, but in several languages.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the main thing that I want to bring to the table is that a lot of my work is like community work. I'm out there big time for the community, whatever that means, whoever they come from, whatever community you represent, as long as we're like all, you know, like-minded, trying to promote positivity and stuff like that. And I think that's like an element that's just missing in like all the bureaucracy of things, right? Like we come to these spaces, I've gone to a couple of school board meetings, and it's like, it's a very intimidating building for some people. There's not like really that many young people up here, you know what I mean? So like, I think like the key component that we could bring is like bringing, you know, whatever, the best parts of our home, the best parts of our family to the table, because we're missing like a big, big component of this, which is love. Like if we don't have love, passion, commitment to that, all of this pie in the sky stuff is like, you know, pointless. So that's that.
It works. I can lean. Is it on? Yeah. No, it's good. It's good.
It's gonna work.
This is the most important part, finding the mic that works. So like I said before, I'm an organizer. I watch the tradition grow at Dare. Dare has a history of doing engagement, organizing, you know, actions against the Brown School Department and to make change. I think that's how it happens. And I think historically in this very city, we've seen it happen. You know, notices going out in Spanish, that didn't happen without the parent organizing committee and parents organizing, making demands. Youth are making demands now for counselors and not SROs. You know, you have to listen to the folks who are living in and the folks who are making demands. They have the vision and the clarity and the lived experience day to day to tell you what needs to happen. I'm an organizer, so those are the things I would be demanding. Those are the folks I'd be bringing to the table and having them share their own experiences and their own vision, their own demands. And that's where I leave from. That's what's going on.
I believe that the major thing that we're missing in these schools is Jesus Christ. And we can't get love if we don't get to God. We need God back in these schools. One of the major things that happened, and it's historically proven, when God was taken out of the Pledge of Allegiance, schools shooting stopped, started the following week. You know, you can go look this up. We need God back in these schools. We need God in these children. They need love. They need to know how to handle life when they leave from these schools and when they come to these schools. So the major problem that we need in these schools around the country, we need Jesus.
I guess what I would think about bringing is thinking about sort of all of the challenges that people have mentioned already, whether it's parental law, or IEPs, or language, language and culturally competent education is asking really what's in it for our kids, right? And that all of those things are really important and guide that. So I guess I would think about things through the lens of education, but without safety, without mental health and wellbeing, without the resources that we need, that education can't happen. And so I think, I think for me, the big piece is the sort of mental wellbeing and wellness that comes from being part of the community of learners and part of the community within the city. And I think that that's the lens through which I think we need to be asking and answering questions and facing our challenges.
I would say the critical issue facing the district, and for me, is reducing chronic absenteeism. You know, I would love to serve as a thought partner with the district to create a comprehensive, you know, attendance campaign, you know, with a hashtag with, you know, promoting data transparency. You know, let's look at the data, see where, you know, some of the problem areas are, and drill it down by grade level. You know, figuring out how to re-educate parents regarding the importance of attendance. You know, addressing their misbeliefs, so that we can reduce attendance at scale, and figuring out what that means for students as well, advisory lessons, you know, essay contests, poster contests, et cetera, recognizing students who have shown improvement with their attendance and so forth.
So one of the various that I see as I work in the medical field is emotions. I see a lot of young kids that is affected by their emotions, and that's why it's affecting in class, in school, and it's affecting in our home with the parents. And I see this one of the big variants that we're seeing is emotions, emotionally and mentally. Since I work in the medical field, and I'm willing to work with the team, with plans that is working with other students and other kids that is working programs that is helping them emotionally. So that's one of the things that I think that we would like to work on, emotionally with the kids, and for they could reflect, you know, at school. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things I look at is the disparity, you know, in the school system. Well, we got a charter school, why each kid has the potential? So we need to tap into that. And the best thing is how can we narrow the disparity? Whatever we see around, like in Brown, the other schools, charter schools, whatever access they have, computers, laptops, and what have you, what can we bring it to our own people? What can we bring it to the school, the public school system, so that our children too can have access to those things? Those are things that we need to look at. Because when they have access to books, they have access to online training, we too need to look at the ways we can make that available for our kids, and give the teachers the responsibility to be the teacher to teach our children, and give them the support. We should be there for support. Thank you very much.
I think one of the biggest problems that students are facing is in school in Providence, is especially we focus too much about attendance, but it's financially, emotional, and personal issues that they're going through, and that we are not willing to address, because we wanted to make sure they're in school, but why are they not in school? Some of them, they don't have the money to take the bus. Some of them, they only eat the food they offer them in school. That's the only meal that they see the whole day. They struggle. And then they go home, the parents work two or three jobs. They have to take care of their own brothers and younger sister, and take them to school, and help them with school work. And then when they come to school, they train, they tired, they exhausted. And we demand them too much from them.
I think it's hard to narrow it down to just one. I think we should listen to our kids, like what would make school exciting for them, making sure that schools are an exciting place for them to want to go to school. So that way, they aren't trying to beg their parents to stay home for the day, and aren't showing up to school. You know, making sure that they have art, music, and gym, and recess. I was talking to one of my kids, and they couldn't believe that, you know, in middle school, that there's no recess. So, you know, making sure that kids are excited to go to school and feel supported while at school.
I think the one issue that hits home for me, and this is, but I believe the overall learning culture in the city needs improvement. And so, what does that look like? I told y'all earlier that I have a lot of family within the public school system. And so I would use them as feedback. I would use them as feedback to see what exactly needs to be improved, and what these kids need to go ahead and say that they're happy at school. We have AI today, we have Instagram today. It's a time to use it for good, it's a time to use it for bad. Thank you.
I think that the main thing that we need to do is to make the schools the anchors of their communities the way they used to be. And that means that, don't have them open from nine to three in the afternoon. They should be open almost 24/7. They should be the anchor to the community, and that makes it exciting for the kids to come, like people were saying before. And it makes it exciting for the teachers to come. And we spend a lot of time trying to say what went wrong. Let's try to figure out what's going right in other places that we can steal, borrow, beg, and bring back into our system. Because our kids are as smart as anybody else's kids are. We just need to give them what they need in order to show that. Thank you.
Plus one on that, postponing all of that. Hi, everyone. Again, I'm Angel. I think for me, three Cs come to mind, culture, connection, and community. As a director of AS220, which is an arts organization, I was a young person there myself. I did terrible in school. I was suspended, I was in detention, I was a teen mom. It wasn't until I got involved with an arts organization and created youth development, that I got interested in education, so much so that I went on to get my masters at PC in urban education. That was because the arts, something that is more than just about learning arts, it's therapeutic, it's about social-emotional development, it's about putting young people onto justice-based education. That is something that I want to see in our schools. I don't think that young people should just have to go to art, after-school programs to have access to the arts. It should be involved in the school, it should be in the way that we teach, where the creative capital, and I feel like that's one of the biggest issues that needs to be taken and implemented back into PPSD.
I think the biggest problem with the Providence Schools is the lack of involvement by the community and the parents. And I think one of the ways to solve that is with neighborhood schools for the parents who choose to send their child walking distance to the school. Makes it easy for the parents that don't have cars, which is half the parents in my neighborhood, to get involved with their school. And it would also reduce chronic absenteeism by allowing the kids to go together, walking school buses and other strategies. As I mentioned, I work with a state representative who visits schools, and one of the schools we visit is Windsor Avenue in Johnston, where they have what I just described, and they have like 40 parents involved at every event they do, compared to none in Providence. You ask what schools are bring to this? As president of my neighborhood association and leader of the Providence Coalition of Neighborhood Associations, this is our biggest issue. And I've also worked with the state commissioner on this issue and will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we need to take a holistic approach to engagement in our schools. You know, chronic absenteeism has been a problem in Providence for decades. We're finally getting around to addressing it. I'm happy to see that Governor McKee has made this a priority. But while we're measuring chronic absenteeism, we have to learn why some of our students are chronically absent. And secondly, our teachers need to be more engaged in this process as well. If we're losing good teachers, not to retirement, not because they're leaving the profession, but because they might be making lateral transfers to other school districts, we have to learn why. And lastly, our parents, yes, need to be more engaged. It's very frustrating for me, as a former member of the Providence City Council, to go to a PTO or a PTA meeting and only two or three parents would be there. Well, it's very difficult for parents to attend a PTO or PTA meeting when some are working two or three jobs just to get by. They can't attend a meeting in the middle of the week. So I think we need to restructure the way we engage our parents, our students, and our teachers. And again, triangulate those three components of engagement so that everybody is involved in this process.
I have a passion for education and the community. And I think we need to find a common ground where the state, the city, teachers, parents, students, find a way to get ready for college or trade school if they decide so. What I bring to the table is that I used to work for the University of Rhode Island in different communities and different school departments, and I can see different situations. I also, in 2016, I did a community project, and it was about absenteeism at Providence, Juanita Sanchez Revolution Room. I did a project, that this is my main theme, about the teacher who made a difference in my life, finding students' sweet spot. I like baseball. I think every student has something good that they can develop, and teachers should be able to find that sweet spot.
One of the biggest issues, I think, in Providence Public Schools is that there's a lot of inequities within resource allocation. So this is reflected in our curriculum, in our teacher professional development opportunities, and engaging with parents, young people, and community-based organizations. So, also not to mention the school infrastructure. So I graduated from class going 2019. A lot of our schools had mold. So if you're in an environment with mold, and there's no water bubblers available, there's a lot of health impacts long-term. So what do I bring to the table? I'm an organizer. I work with community-based organizations. I work with young people, parents, and so on. So there are many projects that I worked with the commissioner. I was on the Civics Task Force, and I'm a COB Ramondo plaintiff. So how do we meet the learners where they're at? That can be the teachers themselves, or the young people and families, instead of taking punitive measures.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a few. But I think what I'm going to stick with is little student achievement. I have a son that, you know, that I explained that is in school. I believe that tutoring and mentorship, just like it was discussed on here, about that mentor, being that person that, you know, when you went to school, they built you up, they spoke to you, they came down on your level, and they understood who you were. There is a lot of those aspects that have been taken out of the school. Also, the infrastructure, I mean, I go into, my son is in Martin Luther King right now. I go into that school, and it's the same way as when I left it almost 20-something years ago. So I'm taking that very lightly. But we do need to upgrade on those infrastructures. And also, like I said about the tutoring, right now with my own son, he had trouble with reading. I had to go and outsource and pay for a tutor on my own. Although I'm a working parent and everything else, I still had to do it. So I want to bring to the table on myself.
Thank you. Sorry. Next?
For me, one of the main issues is that there's a lot of interconnected needs and challenges that impact the students' mental health. And that might include, you know, things going on with their parents, their teachers, their environment. Mental health has to do with all of that, with how they feel about themselves, with their surrounding, and with others. And one of the reasons I think I may be able to provide some insight into this and help and solution with this is that I'm a founding member of the Community Health Worker Association of Rhode Island. I'm a certified community mental health worker. I'm a committee member of the Back to School Celebration of Rhode Island that provides backpacks to 15,000 kids every year. I was one of the members of Temas Familiares, which is parenting matters, that was conferences and workshops for many parents for several years. And over 25 years of working with the community as an advocate, and working with city officials, community organizations, and other community leaders to provide solutions for the data and the problems that we already know that exist. for the data and the problems that we already know that exist.
Thank you.
I think that the biggest issue facing Providence public schools is how to embody the voice and expectations of the community. In particular, I think they can chackle that by increasing their capacity for management and oversight of the district and its outcomes. We know that kids are still at, uh, uh, affected by the pandemic, there are lingering effects on their well-being, on their learning. We know that, uh, there's uncertainty around, uh, the return to local control. We know there's a fiscal cliff, um, as federal dollars dry up, and as the state potentially offers less funding as enrollment declines in PPSD. So what can I bring? I bring research experience, my doctorate in education policy from Harvard, I've co-led research institutes at Brown and at Harvard on economic mobility and education policy. And my work with large school districts is helping them develop systems that are cohesive and effective around student outcomes that are meaningful to the community, things that people value. How, what are we gonna do? What can we expect out of students? How will their lives change for the better because of them? And if they're not, what do we do about it?
Thank, thank you.
Hello? Yes, hi. It's been a lot of great answers. Um, when the question was asked initially, the first thing that popped in my mind was chronic absenteeism. Um, I've read that greater than fifty percent of the students are missing more than fifty percent of the days in school in this district, which is very alarming. Uh, as a board member of Times Two Academy off Douglas, we had, uh, we had truancy as well, and the way we addressed it is that we had social workers who would make phone calls, knock on doors, and really what it comes down to is, another candidate spoke on, is we need a holistic approach to this. We need to work with city councils, state legislature, and we need to find out why kids are not able to come to school. Usually has to do with economics or mental health issues. And sadly, I think it's gonna take more than the school board itself to tackle this problem. We're gonna go work together with city and state apparatus.
Thank you. For the third question, it's also one minute, thank you, Ron, one minute, and this is, how can the Providence School Board be more accessible to the community? Specifically, underrepresented stakeholders such as students and parents' guardians? So let's start with Mr. Ross and continue to go counterclockwise.
All right. Um, so I would say that we definitely have to, uh, get in touch with all the nonprofits and, um, businesses in the private sector and have some equity roundtables to discuss some of the issues, um, plaguing, uh, the district. And we, it's, a lot of the issues facing the district cannot be solved within the physical school buildings or seven-nine-seven. We need the whole community to come together and support this work. Um, so again, roundtables where we have representatives from the pri- private sector, the public sector, um, uh, families, uh, and again, we'll create a plan to address the issues.
Um, I'm a believer, if we work as a team, um, we can make things better. I believe if we do graphics to see the main things of issues that we have and the kids are facing, taking, um, new plans, new programs, I believe, I'm one of the biggest believer, having after-school. Let's have after-school, that they have a moment that they could express themselves. I know one of the programs that is working for students right now, it calls Time to Talk, is being in, in Hope High School, is the after-school, kids go there, they express themselves, they have someone to listen to. I, I believe if we do have programs like this after-school, there's kids that they don't wanna go home because they have issues at home. So we do have programs that, you know, parents could come and, and we could, you know, talk. Sometimes they wanna someone to listen, they wanna feel valued. So there's little things that we could dress and help it come together.
Thank you. Mr. Norris?
Thank you very much. Uh, one of the things we need to have and know is the community buying, you know, we need to take ownership. If we have a school in this community, we need to get the community involved. And how do we do that? Have activities, you know, where parents and whosoever live within that community will be a part, joining the, and the children. For some of us, in fact, the privilege to travel all the countries and see how their education and the system work. The more you have people involved, the more people buy into any system they have, the better the way it comes for it. If we don't take ownership of our school system, take ownership of our children, having their parents knowing very well that their involvement also entails that their children too get involved. And that will help everybody. It'll be a win-win situation for the community and for the state.
Thank you.
Um, I went back to schools to get my master in education. One of the biggest reason why I did that, because I was, I wanted to know how can I help this generation that needs so much help and attention? And when I was getting my master, I was helping as a volunteer in Espacial in the parents' engagement, um, committee that they had. And I used to see how bad is the communication between us and parents. And as a parent, I went to school in Providence, I went to Central, my daughters went to school in Providence too. And I, I think creating those committees and making it available during the weekend as well, not just during the week, cause a lot of parents work, like I said earlier, two or three jobs. Also, the language, like somebody mentioning here, is a good way to communicate and make them part of the education. They, we need their help to raise, like, it takes a village, uh, it takes a village to raise a child. So if we all work together, we got this.
Uh, I would, eh, individually, I think it would make sense for individual board members to go to the schools and talk to the children while they're in school and see, you know, what they are enjoying and what they are liking out of school and being accessible to the students. I would also, uh, you know, recommend potentially moving where the school board rotate which part of the city the school board hearings are, so that way, people in different parts of the city would be able to attend in person. Uh, also making sure that hearings for the school board continue to be virtual, both virtual and in-person, and people can call in with any comments. Um, I, I think I see my city councilor back there, I would attend, uh, when she's having her meetings in, in the ward, I would attend and listen to constituents and make sure that they're able to talk to me as well. Thank you.
A lot of great things said, um, weekends, community engagement, roundtable, uh, but I believe going digital is the best way to go ahead and encompass all that together, especially with the, the presence of Zoom calls, YouTube, which is now present. Um, I also believe push alerts, we get alerts for everything. Um, and so, if we could go ahead and integrate that into the community and for those parents that work two or three jobs, it'd be a plus and it'd also serve as a way of getting all the misinformation that they may have. Thank you.
So if the question is, what can the school board do to be more transparent? I think one way to do that would be to assign every member of the school board to be an advocate for a school that is not where they live, but in another part of the city. Because it's very important that we learn about other people than just our neighbors. We really need to be an advocate for the entire system. And I think having somebody there, you're assigned, you're the liaison, you're the communication hub for what's going on in a particular school. I think that that would make it real for parents whose kids go to those schools, and it makes it less parochial. We will really start to think about what's happening to everybody else's kids, not just our own.
Hi everyone, it's Angel again. Thank you so much. Um, I think for me, I'm a poet, so I think about like alliteration, and when I can find that, I'm like, there's something there. So I'm thinking about projects, participation, and, um, and partnerships. So in the case of how does this, how does the school board make itself more accessible? I don't know, but me as a parent of five, all of my kids who will be impacted by PPSD or already have been, I've been most involved as a parent when I'm asked to be on a project. So I was part of the CDT, um, process during Turnaround. That project, getting involved with the community design process really engaged me as a parent. I think partnerships with local arts organizations, justice-based organizations, businesses, we get, um, more participation from parents, from community, from businesses, from young people, if we're involved in the places that they convene naturally. Um, and participation, showing up. I mean, if you're a school board member, and I know this already happens, we have an awesome school board, as is, but showing up, actually getting to meet parents, meeting families, being where young people go naturally, um, projects, partnerships, the participation to me is where it's at.
As I already mentioned earlier, I wanna get the community more involved with the schools, uh, I wanna have the neighborhood associations like the one that I'm the president of, invited to come in and volunteer in the schools and help out in that way. I think neighborhood schools would make it easier for all the parents to get involved. Uh, one of the things I wanna do, uh, also another idea is community schools at night where the parents can go to the same school that their kids go to and take some of the same classes. One of the things I wanna do if I'm on the school board is actually go and visit all the schools in person. I wanna accompany Commissioner Infante Green and Superintendent Montendez on the unannounced visits, they do regulate all the schools and go there during the day to see the kids in action and meet with the parents at night at as many, uh, PTO meetings as I can. Uh, one of the advantages of me being retired is I have the time to do all of that, and I will devote that time if I'm appointed.
So as a former elected official, uh, as a member of the city council, I have a track record of spending time in our schools on a regular basis, from reading to our children to engaging parents at the community meetings, uh, to making myself accessible via social media and email. I think I would treat this position very similarly to how I treated my city council position, and just making myself accessible. Whether it's, again, using those modes of communication, showing up in our schools, announced, sometimes unannounced, that makes a real difference. When parents know that folks are accessible, they are more willing to reach out to their elected officials, to their appointed board officials, and ask questions and demand results. But if they don't know who we are, they're not going to reach out to us. And I think our schools can do a better job of engaging our parents, letting them know, these are your school board members, these are the folks who are representing you, and if you're not getting the results we all expect in our school buildings, these are the folks whom you can hold accountable.
There is, uh, we have heard a lot of good ideas, but hopefully we can put it into practice, but I think, um, I will add few more, like doing outreach, look for other school districts, um, best practices and try to implement it here. Um, the same way that we advertised this event was the first time that I heard about this event so, so many times. And also, um, being part of, of the volunteer at the school, a, a different school and being part of the parent advisory committee, I realized that kindergarten, sixth grade and ninth grade parents are the more willing to participate in anything. Um, I will educate the parents about the, the school board, because a lot of people don't know about that. And I work at CCRI, at the, eh, eh, Educational Opportunities Center, and things such as, I have an IP, students don't know, and they, they don't bring it to school, and they lose a lot of opportunities.
So first and foremost, I think as a school board, we need to restore the harm that was inflicted, uh, by the institution and the system, whether that was intentional or not, we need to gain the public's trust again. We need to work with young people, parents, community-based organizations, and restore the harm. Also, we, uh, need, as we're working with them, we need to not exploit them. Cause a lot of times, we have students come on these committees or these design teams and then we put their name on there and then say that, oh, they were part of the design process. So how do we spend people's time, make sure that, um, everyone's getting paid inevitably, whether that's teachers, um, as they're getting involved, and then also making sure that the needs are met with families? And also, there, we need to leverage the community-based organizations who has been doing the work for a very, very long time on a grassroots level, on the grounds. So, there are people...
Um, honestly, mine's is very, very simple. I feel like I haven't seen the Providence School Department in any of these schools. Um, I was actually one of those parents that would go onto the city, the city of Providence sites and read the agendas on everything, when it came to recreational, when it came to the Providence School Department. So what I would do is just like what everyone else said, I would literally go to the schools, um, make ourselves accessible, speak to the superintendent and also to the parents, and also, um, have meetings, uh, because this is not a conversation that is had in those public schools. Um, like I said, I was always a parent of myself that went on, onto the websites to find out what was going on and to keep myself abreast of everything. But I know there, you know, people in the community, they're, they're not gonna spend time like that. So we really do have to go into the Providence public schools and make our presence known. Thank you.
Um, for me, I think that one of the things that we need to do is make sure that we choose people that are already trusted and respected by the community, instead of having people start when they become, you know, school board members. And making sure that, you know, that the community knows that they can be, that they can trust us. Um, the other thing is, we already have social media, websites where information is accessible, make it easier to be accessible. I don't know if anybody's visited the website for any of these meetings, it's very hard to get information, um, for parents or regular people. Um, the other thing is better schedules for people to attend in the community. Um, also, the other thing is involving organizations and professionals and experts that are already doing the work in the community, so that we can get more information and input. The other thing I would love to see is maybe coordinating field trips to other districts, other cities, and see what innovative ideas are already working that, that's working with them. And making sure that we bring those good ideas over here and applying them, and making sure that everything is culturally appropriate and, um, competent, so that everybody in the community can be a part of this process and that innovation and the betterment of our communities.
Thank you. I think it's important to address some of the more important root causes of why there's such a, um, a disconnect and lack of access. I think one of it sometimes is simply, you know, lack of awareness or lack of access. Sure, sometimes it's actually, you know, or sorry, lack of awareness, like, we don't know when they need, we don't know where it is. Sometimes it's lack of access, I can't get there, I'm working, I have family care responsibilities, whatever it is. And then thirdly, I think, which folks have mentioned is the hardest repair, is a lack of trust and active distrust of the system or the school board. So to tackle that, I think there's probably two categories of things, you know, one is tactical, and folks have mentioned them. Can we move the, the meetings around the districts, have them at different schools, become closer to practice, closer to families, um, and closer to students? Upgrade the technology, the website, the AV equipment, improve real-time translation, and, um, and then on more strategic is reaching folks early, new parents, before trust is broken, bring them in and show them how to access this, do student outreach, and then help corrective outreach to nonprofits and non-community.
Hello? Yes, uh, to increase accessibility, I think we need to go where folks already are. Uh, a lot of great answers have already touched on this, but we could work with local organizations, infer that we could, if possible, we could give them grants to uplift them, help them in their mission, and by doing so, we can also piggyback on the audience that they get, and we could make our presence more known in the communities. Uh, another great idea I heard was moving the board meetings around the district, I think that's a good idea. We could also move it to a weekend so that folks who are working more than one job could possibly attend if they wanted to. Of course, we could do Zoom and make it, uh, available online. And aside from that, another place folks are is digital. We need to step up our digital, Facebook, uh, X, uh, presence such that student, uh, parents and students can be updated on what we're doing.
Thank you. I think, um, the problem's even worse than, than the question suggests. Because if you think about who actually are the stakeholders and who this, the Providence School Board, um, actually is engaged with... and who the Providence School Board actually is engaged with, we're talking students, not just parents, but the students, teachers themselves, employers, members of the faith community, and taxpayers. And I think it's not just the parents that are struggling to, to be, for the board to meet with, but also the accessibility for the entire range of stakeholders for the board. I think a lot of innovative ways of communicating have been already mentioned out here, but I do like the one where it's where you meet them, where they organically are already convening, trusted, trusted community leaders, working through them. And let's face it, the policies and the work of the board are very intimidating. And the work needs to be done in a way, communicated in a way which is much, much simpler and much more interesting for our, for our community members.
It feels different to go towards the end. So I think that to make the school board more accessible to our community and the various stakeholders, again, lots of great ideas mentioned already. We do have some infrastructure already. There are, all of the meetings, both the regular board meetings and the committee meetings, are livestreamed and recorded on YouTube and available as an archive. The electronic school board houses all of the agenda and then all of the attachments and presentations that are given there. But I think that we suffer from a lack of communication, both before the meeting to know where the meetings are, when they're happening, what issues might be coming up. And not leveraging the communication tools we already have within the school district to let families, students, and staff know. And then also outreach and making sure that we are following up after the meeting to actually let people know what happened, to remind them, like, hey, in case you missed it, here are the five important things that happened that day.
A lot of the ideas that you guys hear are very much possible to happen, but it will not happen without transparency within the communities. There should be more community meetings, more availability to families, not just a meeting once a month that might be posted, it's submitted or shared. It should not take parents on the verge of harassment to the school board, to the school department, to the superintendent's office, to get just a call back, not even a meeting. So if we are more transparent, more open to the families, and actually responded to the families when they asked for help, it would be a lot more easier for the school board to be more available.
Going back to trust. I don't know if many of you have seen the meetings on YouTube, but if we cannot get the board itself to trust each other into having a meeting where they can all work together, I don't know how parents can trust that board. Also, I have three kids that went through the system. I have, my little one is in EQ. And when we were talking about me being part of this group, the first reaction from my kids that have been through private school all their life is that, "Oh, my God, Mom, you're going to do that?" There's no trust from the students or from the parents because there's no connection. There's no connection on what really goes on between the parents outside. I mean, we're losing students also in the school district. I don't know if anybody knows about that, but we're losing students because of the cost of living, because housing is so high. Those are the things that we need to discuss. Those are the things that the board needs to put on the agenda. We need to have items on the agenda that relate to what kids go through every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
When I think about accessibility, the most accessible educational institution that I've been a part of is College Unbound. And what they do, the four things that they do that make it super accessible for adult learners to return to school and get their degree, they feed you, they provide childcare, they'll help set up carpooling, and they holistically educate. I think that if the school board is going to be accessible and want to be visible in the community, we have to make sure, are we feeding people? And that sounds like a big budget, you know, that sounds like a big dollar sign, but are we providing food? Because school board meetings usually are around dinner time, right? Are we providing childcare? Like, okay, yeah, come to this school board meeting, go have someone out here to sit with the kids so you can really lock in and pay attention. Are we holistically caring about our community and the people we're asking to come to these meetings? What do you need? Like, are you okay? Are you healthy? Are you good? And the last thing was, oh, yeah, transportation. I don't know how we could do that, but we should be able to do something. We work for the cities, and school bus passes, birth of bus passes for families or whatever. So, yeah.
Alright. It kind of sucks to go in last because everybody kind of takes your answer. It's cool, though. Yeah, it's like, it's like a combination of what everybody is saying. What really needs to be addressed is access and communication. I think outside of all that's being said, if we're actually listening to what we're saying, like, we have the power in this room. I'm gonna say that again. We have the power in this room. We got former council people up here, executive directors up here, a bunch of juiced-up people. So if we talk about community, we talk about ourselves, alright? And my challenge to everybody here is today, if we're talking about engaging in community, well, communication works both ways, does it not? I call my friends and they call me. So if you have connections with organizations or whatever the case may be, hit up one of these schools and be like, "Let's have a pizza day. Let's have a game night." That's how we do it. You know what I mean? Like, people, like, try to, try to, I don't even know, like, what the word for it is, but they try to make this stuff so complicated. Meeting people where they're at is literally doing just that.
One of the major things that I see because our parents, you know, the parents to these children, they work hard jobs, you know, they got to take care of their children. You know, they have gas to put in their cars, they have to cook the food, they got to prepare their children for school. And one of the things that I see that is very important that the board needs to do is give the parents incentives, make them a part of their child's education, have them come to these meetings, give them something, give the kids something, you know, give them food, give them a gas card to make them want to come, give them an incentive, you know, because the parents are just as important as the, as the children. Not only that, because the communities, you know, our communities are so distraught, we're so divided, you know, as a people, just divided. We, we got to come together, we have to show love to each other. We got to have respect for each other more than anything. We, we got to have a vision of where we're going and where we want to see our children.
Guys, tired of listening to us yet? I've heard some really great, really great proposals, really great solutions from the group, but I think this is really where it's at, is getting people together and getting great ideas together. But the reality is, there's probably not a simple solution to this, right? This is multifaceted, longstanding problem. I think that the problems of accessibility and access and communication are what we've all heard from everyone. And I want to reiterate what I've heard from a couple of folks, which is that I think really trust is going to be key, whether that's trust between the board and families, whether that's trust between the board and teachers, or the broader community. And let's face it, we're facing a process that is, at its core, really about regaining trust, right? And that's not a simple task. It's taken a long time for that trust to erode, and to expect that it's rebuilt overnight is probably unrealistic. But that doesn't mean that it's not important. We, I think, really need to work on a reconnection between the schools and the community, put the community at the center of the schools, put the schools at the center of the community. And it's going to take all of the things that people have mentioned to work hard to regain the trust. And I think there's really no substitute for that sort of face-to-face understanding and meeting, knowing people.
The lead solicited questions, and we have a slew of them, which we will give to the nominating committees. But there's one that's a simple one, just answer by raising your hand. How many of you are currently or have ever attended a Providence Public School Board meeting? Just raise your hands so the board can get. We all have a few little ones. Okay, thank you. Thank you to the wonderful applicants whose enthusiasm rose well for the city. And thank you to the audience for coming. As one person mentioned, we are sitting here through dinner time. And I think I am so grateful. The city is grateful for your enthusiasm and, and the grace of God to say, "I care a lot."
That's right.
Alright, if we could have a round of applause for the League of Women Voters for moderating tonight, thank you so much. If we could have another round of applause for all of these amazing applicants. And again, on next step, just a couple of things to, to hopefully give some confidence on where we go from here. We have recorded tonight so that the school board nominating commission can review the recording and go back and reference in case they felt like they missed anything. And all of the questions that the League received from all of you tonight will be shared with both the school board nominating committee, but also with me. As I mentioned at the outset, the way this process works is the nominating commission will then forward nominees to my office, and then I interview and recommend final candidates to the city council for confirmation. And I'll be using some of your questions in my interviews with the nominees as forwarded by the commission. And so it is, multiple people have said it, but it's worth repeating one more time. This is the most candidates we've ever had before. And this is, I think, a statement to how much we all care about the future of our schools and our students. We want to thank you for participating. This is just one step in the process, but an important piece of the process. And so thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight. Good night.